Good evening, Kedney City Council, we are now live.
Thank you, Kimberly. Hello, everyone. I'll read the normal announcement before we start. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, all city meetings, facilities are closed to the public until for the notice. Tonight's meeting is being conducted utilizing video conferencing and electronic means of consistent with AB 361, and may be viewed live on Zoom by entering the meeting ID and passcode on the agenda, by live stream on YouTube by entering Agoura Hills City Council Meeting in your browser and clicking on the link for October 13th, October 13th, 2021, I think it's October 27th, 2021. Or you can view the live or archive meetings on the city's website at agourahillscity.org and click on the Watch Meetings Online button. In accordance with AB 361, attendance, public attendance in the council chambers will not be permitted. So if I can, Kimberly, read another comment?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. Written public comments were requested to be emailed by 4:00 PM today. During the meeting, in accordance with AB 361, there will also be an opportunity for the public to speak on each item. If you'd like to speak on an item, you may access the Zoom meeting online at zoom.us and enter the meeting ID and passcode located on the agenda. To request to speak during public comment, please click on the Raise Hand button on the Zoom toolbar. Request to speak must be received prior to the mayor closing the public comment portion of the item. For full details, please refer to the Public Participation section on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Allow Paul the meeting to order. And Debbie, if I could have you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Please stand right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're on mute. Mr. Mayor, you're on mute.
That happens to me every time when we do the pledge. I'll call for a roll call. Councilmember Anstead, here. Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Here.
Councilmember Northrop. Mayor Proton Lopez.
Here.
And I present, so we have a forum for this evening. There was no closed session held this evening, so there's nothing to report on that. So now would like, if I could have the approval of the agenda tonight and with the maker of the motion, state their name and the second also state your name.
City Councilman Chris Anstead, I would like to make a motion to approve our current agenda.
Well, second, this is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Calls for another roll call. Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez.
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well, so the motion passes four to zero. There are no presentations this evening. However, they'll take us to the Intergovernmental and Special Purpose Committee reports, and we will have Adam Haverstock from the Greater Canejo Chamber. Again, Adam, how are you tonight?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Weber and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce with a few updates for you this evening. The first one is that on November 5th, which is next Friday evening, we are going to have the Chamber's annual awards gala. This is going to be at the Hyatt Regency Westlake in an outdoor space at the hotel, and we will be honoring individuals and institutions in many categories. But I did want to highlight a few for you. Our Man of the Year is Thousand Oaks City Manager Drew Powers. Our Woman of the Year, Linda Rossi, is the President and CEO of the Ventura County Credit Union. Our Business of the Year is Los Robles Health System, and our Nonprofit of the Year is, we have two winners for that actually, Senior Concerns and Food Share of Ventura County. There are additional honorees as well. I just wanted to pull out a few, and tickets for the gala are available on the Chamber's website, canejochamber.org. So hopefully we'll see you all there, and also those of you in the public are welcome to attend. I wanted to thank the mayor and city staff for an excellent State of the City address this afternoon. This year, we did broadcast the event virtually on Vimeo and on Facebook Live. Mayor Weber presented the State of the City, and the Chamber Chair Natalie Yanez presented the State of the Chamber. Between the Vimeo and the Facebook Live broadcast, the event reached more viewers than we normally would have in attendance for an in-person event at the Agoura Hills Recreation and Events Center. So we do think it was certainly a successful event. Thank you for everyone that was involved in putting that together. And then I wanted to give a quick update on tourism revenue for you all, because I'm sure that's always top of mind these days, is how budgets are going. As you know, we track hotel revenue at the Canejo Valley Tourism Improvement District. It is the main metric we use to gauge the health of our local hotels. And we are on pace right now to collect $1.1 million in tourism fees in 2021. And that is about 75% of our collections from 2019, which was the most recent pre-COVID benchmark year. So it's the year we're using as comparison. So 75% of where we were in 2019. We've seen excellent growth in both the leisure travel segment and the group travel segment, which for our community is mostly weddings and group travel. We have seen a lag in the area of corporate travel. That has not come back in as large a way. And since transient occupancy tax is a percentage of hotel room revenue, I think you can expect to see TOT trends for this year mirror what we're seeing in our hotel revenue. So that does conclude my comments for this evening, unless there are any questions. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Any, excuse me, any council members have any questions of Adam this evening? I don't see anybody. Adam, I hope, thanks so much for the update, and I hope we can attend that, your event on November 5th.
We would love to have you. Yeah, it's good to see you as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda, I'll have a quick report on the COG meeting for October 19th. Again, as I mentioned last time, we're still working with the county on some homeless grants that will be effective January 1st of 2022. They have an 18-month grant that totals $285,000, and that includes Gabriel Graham's annual contract. And the Homeless Working Group is still working diligently to fund the many outreach programs, including hiring a part-time administrative assistant to assist Terry Dipple. There's also going to be a six-month pilot family notification project, and hopefully that will assist the homeless efforts. The other presentation, we had another presentation by the California State Redistricting Committee by Kimberly Briggs that gave us a little update, and she acknowledged the COG's letter, and also our letter from the city talking about the state redistricting process. And then we had another update from Gaila Hartso, the Executive Director of the L.A. County Redistricting Commission, and she also acknowledged the COG's letter and gave an update. And then Karen Swift, who used to be part of the COG, is now a senior manager with Metro, and she gave an overview of the upcoming funding for the measure of R and M. The city managers also report on COVID-19-related issues. The governing board did approve the measure M eight-year project list, was totaled $6.9 million. They also voted to send a letter to the L.A. County Board of Supervisors supporting Malibu's request for the county to open emergency shelters this winter. Before we go on, I just, I would like to also have Romero, a quick slide. There is, as Adam mentioned, there's a State of the City today, and there's a link that anyone watching can go on and view the State of the City as well as the Chamber's comments. But I want to specifically mention four individuals that really worked so hard to put this address together, and that's Amy Brink, Amber Victoria, and Celeste, and then Romero, of course. They did, I think they did a great job. You know, I was probably the worst of the whole bunch, but they did a great job, and I have to commend them and thank them from the bottom of my heart for working so diligently and put together, I think, a great presentation. So thank all of you. Appreciate it. The next item, I'm sorry, I meant to ask if any council members have any other report they want to share.
Thank you.
Why don't you go first, Elise, as council member Buckley Weber. As you can hear, there's something going on in the background.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Elise, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question about the COG. Is the COG planning on taking any additional steps to support or oppose anything dealing with redistricting?
Well, the letter that was sent by the COG has emphasized the keeping the cities together that are part of the COG, and also, we would like to also include, if possible, the congressional district, to have the same people represent all the cities. So whether that is a done deal, I don't know. We haven't gotten any response to that yet. I'll check with Terry, though, but that just recently went out. So, but I'll let the council know when I find out.
That'd be great, because I think that's a conversation that might be worthwhile for the entire council to be involved, and then give you and Councilmember Anstead our direction, or, you know, that we can discuss that as a council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Yes, Deb.
Thank you. It's quite a day on here. The dog barking. Just to follow up on Councilmember Buckley Weber's comment, there were some maps that came out yesterday for redistricting, and I think the COG is not going to be happy with some of those maps, particularly on the congressional draft. So I do think there is some follow-up that we would love to see the COG pipe in as well as the city individually. So maybe we can agendize that at some point going in the future. I did just want to have a quick, a quick report on Clean Power Alliance. I just wanted to remind the council that October was a month at everyone's billing renewal date, that we defaulted over to the 100% green energy. And so as we near the end of October, just about everyone has now rolled over. And just wanted you to know that we are monitoring the opt downs and the opt outs, and I'm pleased to say that it's been very, very minor. We had two little blips of opt outs and opt downs when the two postcards hit, which is, you know, good that people are reading their mail and they understand their choices. Our call center also had an increase in activity, so that's good, that everyone is engaging. But to date through 10/25, if you include really the start of this discussion towards, until the end of the months, which is about three months, August, September, and October, we've had 123 opt outs, and that's about 1%. So the vast majority of our residents are rolling over to clean energy, and I think that's just a fantastic statistic that I wanted to share with you all. We'll keep monitoring it as, next month, when, you know, the billing cycle hits, we'll keep monitoring to see how it's playing out.
Thank you, Debbie. I appreciate that. The next item that will come up on the agenda is public comments. In this section, it is reserved for items that are not listed on the agenda, that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. So written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. Who wishes to speak, please click Raise the Hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Kimberly, do we have any speakers for the public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. The city did not receive any written public comments, and I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you very much. The next item would be Consent Calendar. And again, this item is reserved for items on the Consent Calendar. Written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. If you wish to speak, please click Raise the Hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. Public testimony, again, is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Again, we'll defer to Kimberly for any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor Weber. The city did not receive any written public comments for the Consent Calendar, nor are there any hands raised.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any, any comments from the council members on any items that are on? Yes, Chris Anstead.
Yep, I actually have comments on item number six.
Okay.
Which is the approve the findings for the special Brown Act requirements for teleconference meetings. I, because this item is on the agenda, one of the things that I wanted to publicly bring up is, I actually agree with the provision, but I wanted to bring up to make sure our legal, our lawyer, Candace, and our city manager look into when the emergency ends, and how if we need to, if somebody from our city council needs to be able to be remote and not be able to be in the chambers, that I would like to have researched and understand what the requirements are and whether that person can be remote and still be part of the meeting. Because I think, the reason why I wanted it addressed is I think with this pandemic and with the technology that's changed, that I think that we're now at a point where there should be a capability, or a member, if a member is traveling or is not in the city at the date of a city meeting, that they still can participate in the city council meeting. And so I'd...
May Councilmember Anstead, are you suggesting that we pull this item so that we can have a discussion?
No, I'm not. I'm asking, in addition to this item, based on the fact of the item addresses having meetings remote, then I'm actually asking for more information concerning after the emergency, because this memo addresses during the emergency situation. But once we finish with the emergency, which we don't know when that time will come, but when it does, I also want to be prepared for if we have members that cannot attend in person, that what exactly is the law and what is the guidelines for those individuals that do want to participate but can't be there in person?
She, Candace, are you prepared to discuss that with us? Or you want to, you want to take it off, and you want to have a separate discussion? Or can you, as I saw in Mr. Anstead's question, by a quick response?
I can provide a very quick response, and if more discussion occurs, then we should probably pull the item. So currently, under the Brown Act, you can teleconference. It's just they have those arduous requirements where you have to post the notice outside the door of your location. So if you're like on a cruise ship or at your hotel, you technically have to post it outside your door, and it has to be open to the public, which is a little awkward to have, you know, a public meeting out of your hotel room. So technically, there is a mechanism for that to be able to happen. It's also my understanding that the legislature is considering some legislation, expanding the ability to do these meetings. I'm not exactly sure the scope, but we will look at that. So short answer is, you already have that capability. It just has a few more hoops you have to jump through, and new legislation is on the horizon. And that concludes my brief summary. Thank you.
Perhaps we can bring it back in another agenda item in the future. That'd be good. Thank you for that, Chris. I appreciate that.
And I would, I would like to just say that I would like that to come back when the time is right, because we have some comments on it and some thoughts on it.
Great. All right. Now, since, so you consent calendar, could I have...
Mr. Weber, I'm sorry. I did have to just have a quick comment on number six, number four, and whoever came up brilliant idea of doing smooth stucco. Thank you. Congratulations. I think that's a significant edic upgrade. So I think that'll, instead of the cinder blocks. So, thank you.
Again, I'd like to have a motion and a second before I read the seven items. So I could have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar. I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to adopt tonight's consent calendar.
I'll second. This is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 11, 2021. Approve the demand warrant registered, number 860. Approve the First Amendment to Agreement for the Consultant Services of Karen Warner Associates for preparation of the Housing Element Six cycle update. Approve the request for additional contingency funds for the Sumac Park restroom rehabilitation project, which is NIP 21-02. Receive the annual compliance report, the transportation impact fee covering fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Approve AB 361 findings, the special Brown Act requirements for teleconference meetings. And number seven, adopt resolution number 21-1990. Adopt the Caltrans Local Assistance Procedures Manual, Chapter 10, Consultant Selection. So if I could, I will now call on each council member for their vote on the consent calendar. Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez.
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well, so motion passes four to zero. The next item on the agenda is item number eight, and it's to consider an ordinance, number 21-458, adding a section on mandatory organic waste disposal reduction due to the Agoura Hills Divisal Code. So if I could have, here. Good morning. Good evening, Louis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. How are you?
Good, thank you.
This evening, I would like to present to you, I'm going to share my screen for a second, so give me a moment. I want to make sure that you all can see this. Just trying to, there we go. Are we able, are you able to see the screen, the presentation that's up at the moment?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so good evening. This evening, staff wants to present to you the introduction ordinance, number 21-458. This is to address the requirements of SB 283. Just to kind of go through what we're going to talk about this evening, we're going to have to do a little background on Senate Bill 1383, or as was commonly referred to as SB 1383. We'll talk about the 1383 components as it relates to jurisdictions. We'll cover briefly the ordinance 21-458 elements. We'll also discuss some of the current city organic programs that we have currently. We'll also talk about associated costs with this new Senate bill, our outreach efforts, and then of course, obviously, questions at the end. So some background, SB 1383 was signed back in September 2016. You're probably asking, why is it taking so long for the ordinance to come? Initially, when the law was put into place, the entity that was going to oversee this Cal Recycle was mandated to prepare an auto ordinance. Took them several years to do that. Once they did that, it was disseminated to the cities, and then cities basically looked at it and obviously made the model ordinance to their individual circumstances. It was a very long legislation. There was a lot of information in it that related to haulers and facilities that ran a certain type of organic. So it took a while for staff and consultants to try to go through and ultimately work this, turn his office to create this ordinance. SB 1383 basically directs public agencies to reduce their organic waste by 75% by 2025, and also increase food recovery by 25% by 2025. Primarily, the bill's purpose is to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that, by diverting organic waste that goes to landfills. And I, when we talk about organic waste, we're talking about food waste. Not your normal, just pieces of paper and things like that, trash. As you saw in the staff report, landfills already produce or emit in gas that enters the atmosphere and obviously affect the greenhouse gas emissions. Obviously, one of the main elements of 1383 was that it mandated that cities must prepare an ordinance and have that in place by January 1st of 2022. This, this was just something that they felt needed to be in place in order for cities to move forward. As there is in the staff report, these are statewide targets. These aren't individual jurisdiction targets. But jurisdictions have to implement programs to assist this effort, and ordinance 21-458 today will demonstrate the city's beginning to compliance towards that. The main components that agencies must comply with under SB 1383 are obviously ordinance adoption, which we're doing this evening. And obviously, as you said before, these have to be in place by January 1, 2022. There's an education outreach component whereby jurisdictions will be asked to conduct annual outreach to educate residents, businesses, and eligible food generators. In addition to our requirement, there will be economy permit of haulers and parkers to do the same. There's also an organics and recycling collection element. This basically indicates that agencies must have a system in place for residents and businesses to have this organic recycling in place. The city currently has our own residential program, and a business collection, organics program as well is available for eligible businesses. Right now, as we mentioned in the staff report, the residential program right now is currently voluntary. It's been that way for a couple of years. There's also a contamination monitoring element that must be required. It's basically cities and collectors must on occasion do some auditing and monitoring to make sure that compliance is being done. There's also procurement requirements as well. Additionally, there is, hold on, I may have jumped ahead. Sorry, I was clicking. Go back. There is also procurement requirements, as I mentioned, edible food recovery process, and also, as with many of the new ordinances that come through our registration from, there's annual reporting, and that's something that's going to be required of the city to do. So let's talk about some of the ordinance elements. As you saw in the staff report, the requirements, there are requirements within the ordinance to have, there comes with single-family organic generators. There's also requirements for our commercial, organics generators and commercial businesses. There are waivers for generators as well. There are also requirements for commercial edible food generators, and as well as requirements for food recovery organization services, and obviously requirements on the haulers, any type of facility operator, we don't have any in-town that have to do some type of composting, I'm sorry, facility operators that deal with edibles and organics, and also there's community composting requirements. With respect to the waivers, we wanted to let the council know, as referenced in the staff report, there are two types of waivers. One is called a de minimis waiver. This would be a waiver for like a business that really doesn't generate any type of organic. Could just be a business that doesn't, maybe a paper business, and they don't have any type of generation. They would be eligible to apply for de minimis waiver. There's also space waivers. One of the big issues that was discussed when SB 1383 was being developed was, there are a lot of cities, municipalities that have older facilities that basically were built back in the 70s as it did at Cereber Hills, whereby there may not be space to have this. And so waivers were something that could be granted. These would be granted by staff. The council needs to know, these are not indefinite. They only live for five years, and at any given time, once a waiver is issued, they can be rescinded if it's discovered that a generator who had a waiver began to meet the organic threshold. Just continuing with the elements of the ordinance, there's also some policy requirements. In addition, there's compliance for the Cal Green Recycling Requirements, as well as the model water landscape efficiency ordinance. Again, procurement just kind of as it affects cities as well. And there's obviously inspections and investigation section within the ordinance, and obviously enforcement. With respect to the inspections and investigations, the ordinance will permit the city to conduct these activities in the event to receive reports or audits show that compliance is not being achieved. The inspections only apply to the commercial sector, and the residential sector will be exempt, but there is, there is always a way for the city to, landscape poller to kind of just make sure that our residential sector is also complying. With respect to the ordinance, the city will have to really enforce these provisions with the applicable vines if there is a violation. with the applicable vines if there is a violation currently occurs. As to who will be enforcing those, primarily that will be city staff and our solid waste consultant, potentially our co-enforcement officer, but as we do now with some of our other solid waste ordinance requirements, usually city staff and our solid waste consultant act as kind of the entity that kind of reviews enforcement and works with it. And it'll be kind of very similar actions to what we do now, notifications before we start issuing types of fines. And so let's talk about some of the organic programs that are currently in place. The good news for us is that we currently have a residential collector waste management that already has a program that currently exists for the collection of organics and it complies with thirteen eighty-three. Currently, residents can place their food waste in the green waste cart. As I indicated before, this is something that waste management's had in place for a couple of years. It's been a voluntary program. And we occasionally through the Acorn One ads reminding people that it's something they can do. So it's something that's already in place, which is, which is good news for us. As referenced in the staff report, upon adoption of the ordinance, the residential program will no longer be voluntary, it will be mandatory. People will not be able to say, oh, I don't want to put my food waste in my green waste cart. It will be have to, you know, for us to comply with thirteen eighty-three. Additionally, in our commercial sector, our current permitted collectors who provide commercial service to our businesses, they also have organics collection program. The program was in place a year or so ago, a couple of years ago, to address the requirements for A B eighteen twenty-six or A B eighteen twenty-six. Eighteen twenty-six basically indicated that if a certain type of business generated a certain amount of waste, they would have to have an organics collection process. Many of the businesses that are mandated by eighteen twenty-six either have establishing service or are working to do that. So by the time they establish the services, they will already be in compliance with S B thirteen eighty-three. As with any type of mandate, unfortunately, there, there is some associated cost that come with the implementation of thirteen eighty-three. With respect to the residential sector, there will not incur a cost simply. That service already exists because it's part of the, the three can collection program that we have. So in essence, the rate that people are paying for their collection of their solid waste also increases the rate to collect the green waste. So now food waste will go in the green waste can. With respect to the business sector, business sectors will see a cost, unfortunately. And as it indicates in the staff report, depending on the frequency of collection, the cart size, their cost range anywhere from sixty dollars a month to one eighty, two hundred eighty dollars a month. It all depends again on the size of the cart and the frequency in which they need to have it collected. As indicated on the screen, you see there is a potential cost connected to the monitoring and auditing that the collector will have to do, but at the moment, it's very too early to determine what that's going to be. We suspect that Calrecycle will spend a lot of their time, probably the first year or two years, making sure cities have the ordinance and places working with those that don't. Then after that, we'll kind of get an idea of what type of monitoring they're going to be requiring of us. So that'll be something that they'll be able to work out with the collector. And of course, with any type of increased administrative tracking and things that we have to do to comply with S B thirteen eighty-three and our ordinance, we will see a little bit of an increase more on the consultant side because obviously it'll be more task for them to staff. We were aware that thirteen eighty-three was coming. We kind of had budgeted this fiscal year some additional funds for our consultant to, to address it. And of course, in future fiscal years, we will also look at that. During the development of thirteen eighty-three, staff met with the environmental responsibility committee and kind of gave them updates on where we were with respect to getting ready for this, for this bill and law. We did discuss the implementation program. We talked a little bit about the ordinance and how the requirements were. And we did receive full support from the subcommittee on this ordinance. The subcommittee, they requested we try to do some outreach to our residents and businesses, just kind of prepping them for, hey, this is coming down. We want you to be on board. And so currently, staff is working with R M G associates on that. And hopefully, we should have our, our outreach, hopefully by the end of the week or next week. We do have a plan. Our plan is to kind of do a, a pre-oureach in the next couple of weeks. We're thinking maybe two to three ads in the Acorn. Once we get the social media feed from R M G, we'll start pushing that out. Also additionally, at the end of the year, when waste management is eligible for the annual escalation on residential sites for rates changes, they have to send out a letter notifying residents of the new rates that are coming out. We will also ask them at that time to put a letter or some type of information brochure on thirteen eighty-three and what they need to put in the can. After post-January one, when that's in effect, we'll continue to do our social media blasts. We'll definitely have an article in the upcoming community newsletter, kind of remind any people the changes. Obviously, once we look at what the Acorn ad will be for the post, we'll see if we have to revise it for pre. So we do plan on running a couple of ads and, and just continue the social media for the next probably six months. We just feel the more information we put out, the better. I want to show you just an example of the outreach that Waste Management has right now at the moment. This is something that they're creating. It kind of tells them what to put in the cart. They are, they are also providing some additional education outreach that they're working on. I was told I should have those in another week or so to look at. Again, we'll post this information on our website, on our organics page. Waste Management will have it on theirs. And we will just try to continue to put as much information out as we can. Just some final comments. As noted, S B thirteen eighty-three is new. It does contain some complex complexity to it simply because it's new and a lot of cities are kind of looking at how, what is the best way to do it. There is some uncertainty as how the programs will actually function in actual practice because this is all new for many, many agencies. But I can tell you that we here in the Green Hills, we've been prepared and we are prepared. We, we knew this was coming. We prepped for it. Calrecycle have been very, very vocal when they met with us in our annual meetings, asking us how about, how are you doing? What are your plans? I can tell you, yesterday I received an email from our representative asking where we were with respect to the ordinance. And I told them, hey, we're taking it for first adoption tomorrow night. And they were happy and glad that we're moving forward. The good thing about our ordinance in twenty-one four fifty-eight and its way to address S B thirteen eighty-three is it's going to assist with reducing obviously methane gas that's released to local and regional landfills. There also will be another element to assist the city in this climate action adaptation plan with obviously, we're reducing greenhouse gas emissions through our solid waste element. That's going to help us with our cap. But it also, it's also going to demonstrate that the city is, is moving forward with compliance with thirteen eighty-three. In, in summary, this is, this is an ordinance that was mandated by, by state California. It was something that the city did not decide, oh, we're going to do this. It was something that has been in the works of the legislature for a while. As I said, Calrecycle has been very, very vocal about this when, when it was all being developed. And we, as city staff, did provide comments and concerns about making sure that, you know, you didn't put something that was going to dramatically increase costs, et cetera. One of the challenges is that there are not many facilities that can actually process organics. So where the facilities are, are a little ways, so that could potentially drive a cost. That was something that was presented to Calrecycle and said, hey, this is something you really need to think about. So at this time, staff is recommending that the city council introduce me by title only. Wait for the reading of the number twenty-one four fifty-eight. This concludes my staff report and myself. I'm Kim Nielsen, solid waste consultant, are available for any questions at the chair. Time to go ahead and stop sharing the screen.
Well, thank you very much, Louis. That was very comprehensive and, and very enlightening. So are there any questions of Louis or C Kimberly's on the, the screen as well? Yes, Elise.
Thank you. My one question, Louis, and, and nice job on that. That was a great presentation. Is on the annual reporting, is the state giving us any money to do that? Or how much staff time is that going to take?
You know what? It's going to take a little bit of time. The annual reporting is done by our solid waste consultant. We have to do an annual report every year to Calrecycle. All that's going to happen is there's going to just be additional items in the annual report that we'll have to fill out, as we call it, more boxes to check that we've done this and done that. I, I think for us, the, the additional increase is going to be just trying to figure out what's the best way to comply with, with the new requirements, like the auditing. How are we going to do that? What's the best way to do that? What's the best way to kind of deal with the edible food portion? That's going to be a challenge because the city has never gone into, you know, edible food recovery. The county, if they do a, a capacity plan, and we're going to have to help them with that. They'll be asking us for information. So that's, those are kind of the unknowns that we don't really know about. But Kim Nielsen and her staff have been very, very diligent. I have emails about like, here's what I think we should do for procurement. Here's what I think we need to do with regards to, you know, reporting. We're going to, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of reaching out to businesses to make sure that they are providing the reports that we need. I think a lot of it's just going to be making sure that we get what we need so we can tell Calrecycle in our annual report that we're complying.
And whose job will it be? Is that going to be Ms. Nielsen's job and her staff to check the bins for contamination? I know that Dennis just loves that.
Well, it's going to be.
Don't start, don't start.
Kim and I have to sit and talk. She does have staff that do go out. I can tell you with some of the other, with our A B eighteen twenty-six, there are staff that go out and visit businesses and make calls. So we're kind of used to that. You know, it's going to be one of those things. We'll figure out what's the best way to do that. We're also going to, we're also going to put it on our, on our, on our residential franchise haulers as well as our commercial permit collectors because that's their client. Those are their clients and they need to be able to be there and to, and to do. We're going to be asking them for reports. So the only way they're going to get that information is by going and doing it. So it's kind of an all hands on deck. The haulers know what they're going to be required to do. If you're a permitted, if you're going to be a permitted collector, our annual permit has a process. It did last year if you were, if you were doing organics, you want to be a commercial collector. We said, we want to see your organic collection program. Now this year, there's going to be more requirements. We're going to be asking to see what education they put out, how many people they touch, when it went out. So in order for you to participate, you're going to have to do it if you're going to get a permit. Also with our residential hauler, they'll have the same issue.
Thank you.
Yes, Debbie.
Thank you, Louis, or Mr. Slyer. Great presentation. Can you, so just, just to clarify, so the residential piece is exempt from inspection. So.
Yes.
Nobody's going up and down our residential streets snooping in our garbage cans and. Okay, so if there was a violation there, how would we know? What, what is the teeth in this residential, that, that's now going from voluntary to mandatory? Where is the teeth in that?
The teeth will probably, we will obviously be talking to Waste Management because they will be, kind of their drivers will probably be looking at it on occasion. We'll, we'll talk to them and say, okay, how do you see yourselves doing this? They have told us that they have a video system by which they have on the trucks now that might assist. They've let us know there may be an associated cost. We're kind of talking about what really those costs really are truly. But that will be how they'll be able to check having compliance. And they'll also know as they're disposing of the green waste, because the green waste is collected, they're going to know because it does end up getting, you know, disposed of initially at the senior value landfill before it's processed. They'll, they'll know if they start seeing food waste then. If they don't see food waste, they're going to call us and let us know, hey, Louis, we got, oh. You know, we're not, we're not, I mean, we're going to have to kind of do our, do our education again and chat. But there is a monitoring compliance and we're being told that we're going to mandate that on Waste Management because they're the drivers that are out there. Whether it's going to be drivers just occasionally, we have the lids. It could be manually or it could be through the system they told us they have currently that's going to assist them with that. So we haven't had those discussions. I can tell you that, like I said, I think Calrecycle is going to be busy for the first year and a half dealing with agencies that are not ready. I can tell you, there are a lot of agencies that are not ready. That's why there was the big, you know, push for, I think it was A B or S B six nineteen that gave, all that did, I wanted the council to know, all that did, it didn't prohibit people from not passing warrants. It just stopped you from being fined on January one when you didn't have, when you didn't have a program or an ordinance in place. All it does is just push the can down the road to March. Again, a couple of months and you have to give them a notice until they intend to comply. So as someone who's been doing this for twenty-six years, been in solid waste probably that long, you do not want to be on that list. You want to be on the, oh, you guys did a great. We've had a very good relationship with Calrecycle because we, we've always made sure.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt that, you know, always proud of our staff for kind of taking these responsibilities seriously and on time. So thank you for that. Can you explain to me, do we know what, what are the fines for a resident or a business that doesn't comply?
In the ordinance, they're, they're kind of, they're very much the same as our current applicable code for infractions. I think it's a hundred, two hundred and five hundred. Let me just, let me just, I think I have it on here.
It's probably buried in there somewhere. And then are there warnings?
Yes, I think, as you know, Councilmember, Mayor Potem Lopez, remember, Louis has never been a heavy-handed agency who will be going, all of a sudden, we show up and we find you. We're going to, we're going to educate you. We're going to use Waste Management to say, hey, we're noticing you're not doing this. You know, we'll do what we do with, we'll send a letter, make sure, hey, give you, make, give you some education, you know. And then we'll check. And then there, there could come a time when we have to find someone. But to be honest, I don't see any of our residents, us issue of fine to them. I think everyone in the Green Hills is pretty green and, and will comply. It's just going to be getting used to the fact that you got to take food waste now and put it in a green waste can. And that's where our education's going to kind of try to help people.
Well, this is my last question. So what you're saying is if I go into my kitchen and I peel a banana, for example, I should not put that in my regular trash can?
No, you should.
I need to have a separate place for that. And so my question becomes, you know, have we worked with, you know, we should all be learning how to compost, frankly. You know, I, I know that there are, for example, Councilmember Buckley Weber, she's got a little can right next to her sink, I think. And, you know, I, I want to say something in the back of my head says, even though Water District helps with composting. And what is, what exactly, you know, how can we maybe fold that into what we're doing? Because to me, that's probably the easiest way for us to get used to not throwing that banana peel right in the trash can.
You know, composting is always something that people can do individually. You never want a mandate that someone has to compost.
No, no, not mandate, but I, I think it's a great opportunity to, to partner with, you know, an agency or, or somebody who.
Every county does have composting workshops where they will put on workshops. They'll come to your community. I think right now they're doing virtual with Kim and I, I think Kim will, yeah, they are. But they will come out and do, when they start doing that, we will be more than happy to schedule composting workshops. And I think what they do is they bring like those composting bins and then they give, sometimes they give a discount, sometimes they don't. That's something we could do. We could easily start doing it, just calling them and saying, hey, we want to host a virtual workshop on composting and do a couple of those to encourage people to do that. But yeah, at the end of the day, that particular item, if it's, if you, if you don't have your own container, it's going to have to go in a can. I wouldn't recommend that you put little cans in people's homes. A city tried to do that about a couple of years ago. And what ended up in, what ended up in the recycle bin was the can that, that the little organic was supposed to go into. I think people will.
Oh, boy.
How to do that on their own.
Okay. Okay, those, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris Anstead, do you have any questions, Louis?
No, I'm good.
I, I had talked with Louis separately and he gave you a lot of, a lot of insight and he answered the questions as he does such a good job of doing that. And I was, I was amazed that there are a total of nine states in this country that have something like this, a mandate of some sort or a legislation that has mandated this food scrap or, or organic waste. And I was very proud of, of the city, as Mayor Potem Lopez mentioned, that, that there, there is a bill that was passed to give other cities more time. But the fact that we're already, we're going to make the deadline and do it all makes, makes me feel good about, once again, the city stepped up and maintained the, the timetable to help us maintain a good relationship with these folks. So I really don't have any, any questions of Louis. He, like I said, he answered all my questions on a, on a separate discussion. So I, I do appreciate everything you did, Louis, and helped me. Kimberly, you want to say anything to the, to this group?
No, I'm good. I think we've done a good job and presented as a great document. And I'm so proud of always being ahead of the game with City of the Green Hills. It's awesome.
So I, I, she's not, I'm going to toot Kim's horn a little bit. That is, that is her, that is her staff, keeping me, keeping me updated, saying, hey, we got to get this done. I, I, I have to put a lot of kudos goes to Kim and her staff. Kim's, Kim's very knowledgeable about this. She's very well-connected in this region. So she, she deserves a lot of the kudos here as well. I can tell you, folks, this is the easiest part. Passing this ordinance is the easiest part of this.
I'll bet, I'll bet, yeah. Well, so if Louis has finished with his presentation, we're going to move on to some public comments on this. So we're, public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. And if anyone wishes to speak, please click the raise the hand button on the Zoom toolbar. And public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. The speaker's time is now to transfer it to another speaker. So Kimberly, are there any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. The city did not receive any written public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Weber. The city did not receive any written public comments on this item, and there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Kimberly. I appreciate that. So if that's the case, then I guess we can go back and start our deliberations. We'll let you go first. Kim, yes, Elise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say, I'm glad that you guys beefed it up a little bit because Mr. Selaya has been working on this and I want to thank him. It's been a tough road. He's been working on it since I've been on the council. I want to thank City Manager Ramirez and City Manager Hamburger and Ms. Nielsen for the work that they've done. I can tell you that there's only a handful, maybe two handfuls of cities in, throughout California that are prepared for January one of two thousand and twenty-two, and Agoura Hills is one of them. And we are so lucky for our residents that we have a program in place. It works. I want to let the public know, if anybody's watching, that I've been recycling my organic waste since Mr. Selaya told me this was happening back in like two thousand and thirteen. And it's quite easy and I'm happy if anybody wants to email to give you, you know, I've kind of learned some tricks of the trade. And once we all start doing it, we're all gonna feel like we're doing our part to reduce greenhouse gases and to fight climate change. And it's something substantial that each of us can do. We, I know that I've talked with Poison Free Agora because one of the things that you have to be careful of is that when you put your organics in your green bin, you have to make sure that the bin is closed. We don't wanna, you know, bring in rats and insects and all of that. And I can tell you from my own experience that I checked my bin when I first started doing this. I checked my bin regularly to see if like any animal had been like trying to scratch it or get into it, and I see not a single mark. So I feel really comfortable, but you do need to keep it closed. A couple of things that I just wanted, obviously, public outreach is going to be the key to our success. I agree with, I think it was Mr. Selaya said that the residents of Agoura Hills are pretty green. And so I think they will do it. We just need to get the information out there. And we may have to have a workshop just to go through it one more time with people. A couple of things I wanted to point out. I don't know how this got into the bill, but I think it's a great addition. It's procurement requirements that the city is required to only purchase paper products that are post-consumer recycled content and to track such purchases. So that got in there and I think it's, you know, a great addition. And once the city learns how to do that and where these products are available, I hope that if I'm still on the council when that all happens, that we can reach out to our local businesses and try and get them on board with that as well. The edible food recovery is, you know, a fantastic program and I hope that there's a way that we can help with that. I know that there's several restaurants in town that during COVID really stepped up to the plate and wanted to help feed people in the community through the county's program. And so I'm hoping that we can work that out. And I'm happy to continue working as closely as possible with Mr. Selaya and Ms. Nielsen to, to make this happen. It's, it's really, it's really a big deal. And like I said, there's not many cities, because I was a member of the environmental, the League of Cities Environmental Policy Committee, and this was a big issue. And it was probably the number one issue that kept coming up in the past year was to try and get support so that the governor would allow people, as Mr. Selaya was saying, you know, it's not much of a break, but to allow them not to be fined on January one if they didn't have a program. That's how many cities don't have a program. So congratulations to the City of Agoura Hills for doing a great job. And as Ms. Nielsen said, being ahead of the curve on this one. So thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Yes, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm, I'm also, like I said earlier in my questions, very impressed with the, with our city as, as often we are leaders in this type of area. And I think that's really important. I think that I understand certainly how difficult it is for a lot of cities to be able to implement this, but the, the fact that we are ahead of the curve, as Councilmember Buckley Weber said, is, is really important because I do think that there are cities that look toward us for our climate goals, certainly with our cap and, and some of our other high priorities that this council has. And so this kind of ties in right with it, that, that we are on time and we're very thoughtful about making sure we're, we're ready. You know, I, I think the, I'm, I'm certainly well, ready to proceed with, with the introduction of this ordinance. My, my one concern is that when I drive around any neighborhood on their trash day, there are tons and tons of cans that are overstuffed and open. The crows are in there. You know, I, I think that this is gonna be a big deal in that sense. And that if, if we are very successful in getting our residents to start using it, there, I, I, I don't want it to turn into a bigger mess than, than what, than what we've, what we're prepared for. Because, you know, we, we have that issue right now. We're, they're just overstuffed. So I, I would ask that we really incorporate that point that Councilmember Buckley Weber made into our outreach and into our education. And it sounds like Poison Free Agora can help with that as well. I, I'm a little worried about the costs for the businesses that, that they have to incur on this. But maybe, maybe down the line, we can work with the legislature to try to get, you know, some offsets for them so that they're not the only ones bearing the, the brunt of, of this ordinance. And I think that's it. And I would love to see, like I said, some, some partnership with composting and things like that. I think it's a great opportunity to expand on what's really a natural and healthy way to dispose of, of our waste. So with that, I'm, I'm ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Chris.
My comments are really focused around kind of our climate action plan and how this enhances our climate action plan on, on a reduction of the greenhouse gases. So I think it's a, it's an important piece of it and I'm, I'm definitely in support of it. And I look forward to, to moving forward and I appreciate the presentation earlier. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Well, I have to, I have to share the, my, my colleagues' remarks. When I was a little boy, my dad composted everything. I remember he would make it, when it was eggshells. It was coffee grounds, everything. And he had a compost pile in our backyard. And, you know, my brothers and I made fun of him. Who thought that at some point it's become mandated? So thank you, Dad, for, for, for being the, the kind of dad you were way back when. So I think, I, I think that ultimately, all of the, the, the folks in, in Agoura Hills will, will comply. And it'll be, ultimately, it'll be a non-event, I hope, for, for our sake. And for, and, because I would never want to see too much, I guess, fines or recommendations. Or I would hope that eventually, everybody will, will take this to heart and do the right thing. So I'm not gonna belabor this, but I am also ready to move forward. I just, I'll leave it with this, that it's another mandate that possibly will cost money to someone else. And I just think it's, at some point, the state has to think about these things before they implement them. But that's, that's, that's my thought, that's my follow-up thought. So if there's, if there's no other comments, what I'd like to do is have a motion for approving this item to introduce and read by Title only. Wait for the reading of ordinance number twenty-one four five eight.
Councilmember Buckley Weber moves to approve.
Thank you.
City Councilman Chris Anstead's seconds.
Thank you very much. Now I'll call for a vote from each council member. Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
And Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well. So the motion passes four to zero. And now I refer to Candace to, to read the ordinance entitled.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be reading by title ordinance number twenty-one dash four five eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Agoura Hills, California, adding Part Nine mandatory organic waste disposal reduction to Chapter Three solid waste of Article Five sanitation health of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code and making a determination of exemption under California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you.
Candace. The next item is a, a discussion on the the Advanced Conceptual Design Plan for the Canan Road-Nagura Interchange. This always seems to come up, huh, Elise?
Yeah.
So.
This is our favorite topic.
I know. It's like deja vu all over again. And I, I see that Charmaine is already.
Third time's a charm. Third time's a charm.
Charmaine is already laughing.
I aim to please. I like to bring it back.
And I know, oh, I know. So anyway, Charmaine, if you could lead us through this, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Weber. Well, good evening, good evening, everyone, Mayor Weber and the council members. Tonight's staff would like to present the Advanced Conceptual Design Plans for the Canan-Nagura Intersection Project. And we respectfully recommend that the City Council provide direction on the design plans to finalize the project footprint for sequoia analysis and proceed with the final design of the project. Next slide, please. In August of two thousand and twenty, City Council approved the intersection alignment, which saved the two oaks on the northwest corner. And the design was further modified to save the one mature oak tree on the southwest corner of the intersection. In October of two thousand and twenty, based on our past project experience, the project's scope of work was amended, breaking down the final design into two phases. The advanced conceptual design phase, which is where we are here today, and a final design phase. At the advanced conceptual design phase, the footprint of the project is finalized with consideration of the aesthetic elements. The final design phase includes the adoption of the supplemental environmental impact report for the A V S P, which would replace the roundabout with the Canan-Nagura Intersection Project. In September of two thousand and twenty-one, the project's scope of work was further amended to expand the project footprint for aesthetic elements. These aesthetics and their footprint will be presented tonight for your consideration. Next slide, please. Based on our past feedback received from the City Council at its May twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen meeting and subsequent Public Works Subcommittee meetings, the next two slides provides a summary of the proposed direction for five aesthetic elements on the advanced plans. First up is the northwest corner activation. The additional space was made available by making the, by saving the oaks. It pushed a north curb line further south. The proposed design includes the expansion of the project footprint to include additional active uses, provide a mid-block walkway to the shopping center, widen the sidewalk as much as possible, and using an inspiration of a color palette that's described as modern rustic, with Palo Comato interchange used as an example. Next up is the pilasters and towers. This element was proposed as a redesign effort through the A V S P update. It removes the location of the pilasters at the Canan one-on-one interchange to max, no, to maximize, I'm sorry, due to safety concerns and the pilasters at the intersection corners to maximize space for pedestrian pathway and the corner activation. But it also still includes the remaining pilaster footprints in the project for environmental analysis and right-of-way take, which would allow the city the flexibility for future construction if so desired. Next slide, please. The gateway monument. This monument is proposed to be a mix of natural materials, slightly asymmetrical setting, closer to the central A V S P area and on the side of the hill on Canan, and oaks planted at the western side of the monument. The wording and the wording only on the face of the monument facing approaching traffic. A little later, staff will, would present three options for the gateway monument for you to consider and provide feedback. The A V S P logo. The logo is proposed to be redesigned through the A V S P update. This would remove this element from the project scope. Canan Road Undergrounding and Lighting. This aesthetic element is relatively new to the project and has been presented to the Public Works Subcommittee. The existing overhead lines and lighting are on the east side of Canan. Feedback received was to underground the electrical and communication lines. The footprint would be expanded to include these poles on the east side of Canan for undergrounding purposes. Next slide, please. The advanced conceptual design plans allows the city to ensure aesthetic elements of the project be designed and made consistent with the Agorabill specific plan, feedback received from the May two thousand and nineteen City Council, and the feedback received from the Public Works Subcommittee this year. Ultimately, this phase establishes the project footprint to move forward with the environmental portion of the project. The feedback that we've received have been incorporated into these plans. And I would now like to present the advanced conceptual design plans of the intersection. Next slide, please. These next two slides will show the project footprint area proposed to be analyzed in the environmental document. This slide here shows the intersection footprint. The pink line, or actually magenta line, shows an existing, the existing right-of-way. And the orange line, which is on the south border of the project, shows the proposed right-of-way. Next slide, please. The footprint area extends further east and west on Agora Road and south on Canan for the pilasters, towers, and monument footprints. The boxed areas shown here are the proposed footprints for the towers, pilasters, and gateway monument to be included for the environmental analysis. On the upper left-hand corner of this slide is the proposed footprint to be analyzed for the tower pilaster on Agora Road at roadside drive. On the lower right-hand corner is the proposed footprint for the tower pilasters on Agora at the driveway entrance to Wizzen. And in the middle, we show Canan with the proposed footprint for the tower pilaster shown to the left and the larger box in the middle for the gateway monument. Next slide, please. Presented on this slide are the proposed road improvements for the intersection. The area in the hatched pink, it's kind of light, are where the new full pavement sections would be constructed. And the hatched yellow shows a new overlay of the existing pavement. Next slide, please. Highlighted here are the high-visibility style crosswalks that have been added to the intersection strip in detail. Next slide, please. We've also added painted green conflict striping for bike lanes, which are shown here on Agora Road on the west and on the east. Next slide, please. Highlighted here are the addition of right-turn pockets for eastbound Agora to southbound Canan, which is on the west leg of the intersection, and northbound Canan to eastbound Agora, which is on the south leg of the intersection. Next slide, please. And here we, and here we highlight the curb alignment adjustments that were done on the northwest corner, shifting it further south, saving the heritage oaks, and the curb alignment adjustment on the southwest corner, shortening the right-turn pocket a bit to save the one heritage oak. The curb alignment just west of the driveway to Lady Face Shopping Center was also aligned to, to align with the expanded greenway area. And the curb alignment on the east leg of the intersection was aligned to, with the west leg modification of the intersection. Next slide, please. This slide here is the overall rendered site plan for the intersection, which features a greenway on the northwest area of the intersection. It shows also the preservation of the three heritage oaks, an additional access to the shopping center, and widened sidewalks where it was feasible, ranging from five feet to twenty feet. In addition, I'd like to highlight a few aesthetic design elements here. Number one is the seat wall. This is proposed for the northwest section of the intersection. The palette used as inspiration was the Palo Comato interchange. These low walls will provide areas for gathering in the newly created greenway. Pictured in number two is the terrace plaza, which further opens up or activates the corner into islands and just beyond. Number three, pictured there are the tree grates. This picture here is taken from the one, same ones used further east on Agora Road, which will tie in the intersection with the existing east leg of Agora Road for continuity. Number four are the flagstone. Number four are the flagstone pavers. This is an AVSP feature used on the east leg of Canaan, oh, sorry, east leg of Agora, and will be continued to be used at the intersection. And number five are dual ramp curves. This is the first time to be used at this intersection, and it allows for directional access at each corner of the intersection. Next slide, please. This rendering shows a cross-section of the northwest corner activation greenway. It provides a perspective as one heads east on Agora Road to Canaan Road. Here you can see how the seated wall, the Terrace Plaza, the widened pedestrian path, and the landscaping all coalesce into a greenway. Next slide, please. This slide is the northwest corner rendering, highlighting the Terrace Plaza, which opens up the corner into the shopping center. Next slide, please. Again, here we have the northwest corner, but this time it highlights the seated wall, the Terrace Plaza, and again, it opens up not just into the shopping center, but down along Agora Road. Next slide, please. This rendering is of the northeast corner, and it highlights the widened sidewalk with the landscaping and tree wells, and the relocation of the traffic cabinets from off of Canaan onto Agora Road. Next slide, please. The gateway monument was presented to the city council with a dual purpose, a joint city entrance monument and a gateway monument to the Santa Monica Mountains. The next few slides will provide three concepts for the gateway monument. Perspectives have been provided for northbound and southbound on Canaan for each concept. Staff is seeking feedback on the conceptual design. If there's preference for one of the concepts or placement of the monuments today. The placement of the gateway monument is critical in cementing the project footprint for SEQA analysis. I would also like to point out that the finer details, such as the wording on the monument, can still be further defined during the final design process or even later. Next slide, please. Here we have concept A. The top is the northbound view and the bottom is the southbound view. Next slide, please. Here's concept B. Same thing, northbound view at the top and southbound view on the bottom. Next slide, please. This is concept C. And this provides the northbound view on the top and the southbound view. Next slide, please. At the last Public Works Subcommittee, feedback was received on having the monument slightly offset and having wording only on one side of the monument as a driver approaches. Here, this slide shows concept C. The top shows the wording on one side, and on the bottom, the concept is shown slightly offset with the wording on one side. Next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation of the conceptual plans. The next steps for the project are as follows. Staff respectfully recommends the council to provide direction on the advanced conceptual design plans, finalize the project footprint for SEQA analysis, and direct staff to proceed with the final design of the project. It will take approximately two months to complete final design to 95%. And then, at that point, the environmental process can begin. The environmental process will take approximately eight months to complete. And again, the final environmental document to be adopted is a supplemental environmental impact report, which would formally replace the roundabout with the Canaan-Nagora Signalis Intersection. Next slide, please. And that's it. And I also have on our, um, tonight, our design team from Kimberly Moore, Laura Foranash and Sri Chakravarti here to help answer any questions, looking for feedback and approval to move forward with the final design with the footprint, final footprint.
Thank you, Charmaine. I don't mean to joke about deja vu, but I mean, we've been spending a lot of time on this, and it's very important. So I appreciate all the time and the effort that you've made with, with the Subcommittee, also with this person. So with that, uh, does any, uh, I'd like to ask any council member, if they have any questions, or Charmaine, or the other folks that are part of this discussion? Yes, Elise?
Just a couple of things for clarification for the rest of the council, because I've been living with this for a while. But just to be sure that everybody understands that the pilasters, we have them in place for purposes of SEQA analysis, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't mean that we are going to actually install the pilasters. But it's better to analyze it with them in than to, with them, with them not in. Is that right?
That is correct. The footprint allows us to analyze as part of the environmental document, and it allows really the flexibility when, at a future date, when, if, and when you want to put the, put the, um, towers in or not. It just saves that space. It, it allows us to do all the technical reports that are required for the SEQA analysis.
Perfect. Also, um, you know, on the, um, nor, on the activated corner, is, how would an AD, is somebody who's in a wheelchair or ADA, how is it ADA compatible? How do they get into that open area?
They would be using the crosswalk into any of the ADA ramps that are there and down along any of that margin greenway.
Okay.
There's also a, um, I believe into, um, on Canaan, there's another ADA ramp area that goes into the lady, I'm sorry, Islands as well.
I, I know about that one. It's just a little bit north of the intersection, correct?
Just north of the intersection, correct.
Uh, can you go back to the one slide where you showed the bike, uh, lanes? Or they weren't really lanes, but you pointed out the green.
Oh, okay, yeah, that was slide number, um, I think it's 11 or 10 or 11? I think it's 10. Oops. One more.
One more, okay.
One more slide. There it is. Oops.
There it is. Yeah, that's the one.
We can use this one too, yeah.
Okay, so I don't see any bike markings on Canaan.
There are none at this point. That's actually being analyzed as part of the Canaan corridor. We've kept the legs, um, the same. The only things that get added are that, like I highlighted, the right-turn pocket on Agora to Canaan. So those have been left out.
Okay, but they can, they can, with that impact, the SEQA document, if we were going to add the bike lanes or bike, I forget what they're called, buffer lanes or something?
The buffer lanes? We can look into that, yeah. No, I mean, it would be identified as part of, can we put it in right now with the, um, alignment that's shown here? We can look into that.
Okay.
On the Canaan, Canaan lanes, correct?
Yeah, Canaan. Uh, let's see.
I think.
Can we say? Bike lanes, uh, can I chime in on the bike lanes?
Sure, yes.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I guess my question is, the, when you cross the intersection of Canaan, there isn't a bike lane on that same side of the road on either, on either side, um, on either the east or the west side. So I'm just trying to understand if I'm a biker, what am I supposed to do? When I get to the, am I supposed to switch over to the other side? Or why, why isn't there a bike lane on both sides of the road?
On, no, there are bike lanes on both sides of the road, on Agora Road, east leg and west leg? Is, is that your question, Councilmember Ransdale?
Yes.
Yes, there, there are existing bike lanes. Um, actually, even today, on the east leg and the west leg. So it continues on both, both sub-its.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, please.
Uh, no problem. Uh, I, I, I didn't have another question, um, other than I want to thank you for providing me the information about the landscaping. And just so the rest of the council knows that the landscaping of the shrubs and the trees are consistent with our, um, streetscape design that was passed a few years back. So I appreciate you getting back to me on that.
You're welcome.
Is there further questions for me? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Elise. Any questions of, uh, tremendous, yes? Yes, Debbie?
Just a couple of additional questions. So just, just to clarify what Councilmember Bosley Weber was saying. So the design of the pilasters was removed, but the, the space, no, placeholder is still being, uh, included for environmental, uh, purposes?
Yes.
So why, why is that not the same for the, um, for the monument sign on Canaan? Why are we talking about the design for that?
The monument sign? The monument sign?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the monument's design is critical in the replacement of the intersection with the roundabout. It was supposed to have like a marquee entrance, and so that, um, provides that element of the intersection replacing the roundabout.
I see. Okay. Um, okay, and then?
I, I can just shed some light on that, Mayor Protemp. The council, and you know, I, I think you might have been on, I'm not really sure, but this has been going on for a few years. We narrowed down and supported the monument, natural monument signs, the, on Canaan Road, and we never got there with the pilasters. We never found agreement. We just kept saying, you know, we don't know, we don't like, we, they're too big, they're too small, they're, you know. So then we've kind of turned the design of the pilasters, if any, over to the CAF. And so they'll, they'll kind of. That part of it. Um, but with the monument sign, I think that our position was, the council pretty much agreed that they liked something natural. So this is what we're seeing.
So why not? Right, okay, so why delay it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, that makes sense. And then, uh, another question is, so for the, the, um, intersection improvement design on page four, the additional right-turn pockets, there are two additional right-turn pockets, is that right?
Correct, there are. That's on page 10, if you want to highlight that. 10, I'm sorry. That's on 11. On slide 11.
Okay. One more maybe?
One more?
Highlighted in yellow.
One more.
There we go.
There it is, yeah.
So I know that it's, I mean, maybe the answer to my question is on a different night during our, um, Canaan corridor discussion, but, I mean, how will this measurably improve the traffic flow through that area? Have you, are you able to share that at this point with those two?
I can pull in our traffic engineer, but before I do that, the Canaan corridor, not that, you know, this is, this is included as part because it's one of the nodes. It does incorporate the design that we proposed here. So that's part of the corridor, and then, you know, obviously, we'll look at the regional part of it. But, um, I can pull in Laura or Foranash on that part.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the additional right-turn lanes, they'll help remove additional volume from those through movements. So, uh, really just alleviating, uh, volume for the through movements and, and preventing queues to spill back, um, and just allowing, uh, additional storage length for those right-turning, uh, movements.
So maybe during our next meeting, I guess, if we maybe get some, some more, um, data on that. I know that's not the, really the point of this, um, this discussion tonight, but I know that that's the question. Anytime we talk about this intersection, that's the biggest question that our residents have is how is what we're doing going to improve the traffic flow? So I, I just didn't know if you had any measurable, um, data to add to, to that discussion right now?
Sure, so when we designed the intersection, we used a design year of 2042. And so the no, uh, the no project, the no build alternative was projecting a level service E with the additional, uh, growth expected at this intersection. The addition of these turn lanes would increase that to a level service D.
And we're at a D or a C right now?
Yeah, so, uh, COVID has changed a few things. So, um, pre-COVID, we were a level service D. We actually took some, uh, accounts probably, um, over the summer. And we're a level service D in the PM. So, you know, teetering level service C, level service D, depending on the, the traffic lanes.
Okay, okay. Uh, thank you. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Chris, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
No questions at this time.
I have basically the same questions that, uh, my, my, my two colleagues on the council. But I think that, um, maybe where I'm a bit at an advantage because being on the, on the Subcommittee that has seen this, um, over and over again, uh, it's, 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 it's making sense to me as to what the, uh, what, what, what it's supposed to look like. And Charmaine has been so patient with, with me personally. And, um, and I know we had another, Elise and I had a meeting this week on, uh, another part of this, this intersection and the Canaan Road. So, um, I don't have any other questions right now. I'm very satisfied with the presentation and the, um, and the proposals that you have. So, uh, so unless any other questions, what I'll do now, uh, I'd like to, uh, defer to Kimberly Rodriguez for any, uh, public comments. So, and written public comments requested be emailed in advance at the next meeting. If you wish to speak, click, raise the hand button on the Zoom toolbar now. And public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. And once again, the speaker's time cannot be transferred to another speaker. So at this time, I'd like to ask Kimberly Rodriguez, is there any comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. We did not receive any written public comments, and there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Kimberly. So now we can go to, uh, any deliberation or final comments as far as the, the discussion on this item. Ultimately, uh, you know, the, we'll have to give direction to staff as to, to proceed or, or not to make some adjustments in this. So, uh, can I start with you, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, obviously, any improvement is a positive, and the extra right-pocket turn lanes, I think are a good thing just to, again, try to alleviate any backlog that's sitting in the other lanes. So I, I, I think that's a positive. I still think there's obviously this whole Canaan corridor, there's a lot of improvement that's going to have to happen over the next, uh, five to 10 years when, uh, and if, uh, things are built in this area. So I, I, uh, I just think there's still probably further work to do that deals with Canaan and probably deals with, uh, uh, more with, uh, the state than it does, uh, here with us. But I think for this specific intersection, I think, uh, that I like the proposals. And then obviously, one of the things that they're also seeking input into is the conceptions concerning the gateway, uh, monuments. And, um, uh, my feeling, I guess, on the monuments, there's either A, B, or C. And I think, um, C might have been the only one that didn't have any writing on the other, the other side of the road, and only has the entrance basically when you're entering Agora or entering the Santa Monica Mountains. And I, I think I probably like that the best, but I think I'm willing to listen to other people's, uh, discussion about what they think might be, uh, the best for that area. Because I think if you're, you're only coming from one side of the road, even though you can see both sides, I, I think it's a little over, overkill to put it on both sides of the road. But, uh, that's, that's my initial feeling on, on that. And, uh, I'm willing to listen and hear what other council members have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Debbie, go ahead. Thank you.
I can go next. Uh, first of all, I, I really want to say this is, this is amazing work. Um, and I'm really thankful to, uh, to the committee and to staff for really prioritizing the things that we have been talking about and that the community has been talking about. I mean, there's so much green space, which is so important to us at that corner. We've saved all of our mature oaks, which is, you know, of such great concern to the, to the community. It makes me so happy. We're opening up the corners, the natural colors. I mean, I think that, uh, the committee and staff, you've really just hit the, hit the nail on the head and, and you were able to prioritize the things that really define our community and. And that's what we want for that corner. We want it to be unique. We want it to be us. Uh, we want it to really reflect the city of Agora Hills. And I, I think, I, I feel like I see that in this design. So I, I really want to thank you all for, for that. Um, I know it's been so many, so much work in so many years. But, um, when I saw this, I just thought it's been worth it because this is really, I think, um, you know, where, where we're going. And, and to Councilmember Anstead's point, you know, this is, traffic aside, that's, that's a whole, a whole conversation that I know we're going to have with the Canaan Corridor discussion. And so, um, you know, nothing is perfect, uh, by, by any stretch of the imagination. But for the purposes of this, um, uh, agenda item tonight, I, I think it's a, it's a really strong, uh, presentation and a lot of great, uh, great work put into it. Uh, for the, the gateway monuments, I actually, um, really, the one that jumped out at me the most is, um, concept B. And I actually really, I didn't, I didn't like the, the size of, of A. Um, I just, but the, the kind of the lower, more muted, uh, size with the rocks are really, irrationally called to me with concept B. And I like the idea of the connection between the city of Agora Hills and the Santa Monica Mountains. So I like that you see both of those things at once. I, I feel like it's a good feeling to know that you're leaving a city and you're going into the mountains. Um, and you get that with that view. And then, um, in the, the same, you know, vibe going the other way, you're coming back from the beach, you're coming back from a hike. You really want to get something to eat and you know you're in the city of Agora Hills now. So I like the fact that, that the language, um, is, is doubled up, that you, you see that, that transition very clearly. Uh, so that's why I like, I like, uh, concept B the best and C would be my second choice. Um, so those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Um, Elise?
I'm mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, first I just wanted to say, you know, that, um, Councilmember Northrup is the one who had the brilliant idea of activating the Northwest Corner. So I'm hoping, I, she's not shy and she'll be watching these, this meeting. Um, unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. And so I hope that, um, Charmaine, maybe you can reach out to her and Nate and just make sure, you know, that that's, um, what the vision was. I think it is. I, I, I approve of the way that corner came out, but I'd also like to have her input on that. Um, I also wanted to comment, um, I like the streetscape design since it's consistent with what we've already come up with for Canaan and Agora Road. And I would just request not to go crazy with the crepe myrtles. It's real easy to throw those in everywhere, um, and, and really, you know, go as heavy as we can on oak trees without, you know, pulling up sidewalks and things like that. So, um, that's just my, my opinion. Um, uh, with the, I, I liked, um, concept C and I like it a little off center, which is the backside, you know, the concept C has three of them. Um, and if you look on the backside, they're off center. And, um, because I found that it just seemed like a little much to have them right across from each other. And also I liked that, um, that we only have the words on one side because it did seem a little much to me as well. Um, and I don't know why, you know, I mean, I, I hear what council, uh, Mayor Protem, Lopez is saying about being able to see both, but it just doesn't seem, it seems odd to me for some reason when I first saw it, that it would, you know, that you'd have both facing the driver. Uh, because the driver only is really, should only be looking at the one that's closest in the direction they're headed. Um, I, Charmaine already confirmed with me that the language can be changed on the monument sign. So instead of saying like entering the city of Agora Hills, we could say something like the city of Agora Hills or welcome to the city of Agora Hills. And, um, I would hope that the language could be for the Santa Monica Mountains. It would say gateway to the Santa Monica Mountains. Um, that can all be done later, uh, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charmaine. But, um, you know, I, I don't mind in, in, in concept B, uh, you know, I don't mind the smaller monument sign with the rocks. What I wasn't crazy about, and I think Dennis agreed at our meeting, is the stacked rocks to the side of it. And, um, there is a meaning to that. And I can't remember if it was Laura or Charmaine who told us, uh, but it just looks, it doesn't look natural to me. So that was my only problem with B, although I don't mind if we do C and it be smaller like B. And that's, uh, let's see, I think those are my only comments.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, I appreciate all the comments. Um, I have to say that, uh, having worked on the, the, uh, the committee with Elise, it's, 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 um, truly, it's enjoyable. Uh, we get a lot accomplished and, uh, I appreciate, uh, Debbie making that, uh, remarks. But, uh, it's something that, uh, Elise and I care very much about and that we have a lot of deliberation and, uh, a lot of agreement, uh, on this. And it's, uh, very enjoyable and I so appreciate Charmaine and, um, the group that we work with, uh, to bring these things to mind. Um, I, I have to, as far as, uh, I, I also like, uh, uh, the, the, as far as the monument sign, the, the, the B. Um, and I, I know that it, listen, it, it draws as a placeholder and we have to put it on the road. That's fine with me. I'm not, um, uh, it's not, uh, uh, you know, it's not in stone. And there's no pun intended. Uh, but, but, um, it, it's, I think we're flexible. And, and I think that, that what's happened with this design and bike lanes and, and again, when, when, as Debbie said, um, how long this is going to be going on, we were told the, the Canaan Corridor, it'll be 2048. And, uh, and Elise and I said neither one of us is going to be on the council by then. So.
Oh, come on, another 20 some years?
Oh, yeah, well, forget that. Uh, but anyway, I, I just want, again, I want to come, commend, um, all the hard work that this committee has done and the staff. Um, this is, um, this is a hard, hard thing to, to bring to this council and all the work that was put in. And as, we've been talking about this corner for years and years. Um, so other than, um, these, these signs on Canaan Road, um, I'm very pleased with the design and, and what's taken place here. Um, and I'm, I'm ready to move forward and I think, I think Charmaine and I, and Nate, I think hopefully listening to us that they've got some direction as to, um, the, the way they, we'd like them to proceed. Um, so, um.
Well, if I can just ask a question.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure that, uh, Mayor Protem Klein Lopez or Councilmember Anstead weighed in on having the signs uh, straight across from each other or offset? And that would be for a document?
Right.
Okay.
If you take a look at the backside of C, you'll see that it's, they're offset.
So are, we're, we're, we're just talking about the placements of it. We're not talking about whether they say welcome to, whether we've got writing on both sides or what it says, or we're just talking about placement?
Right. I know that Elise and I had a lot of deliberation and, uh, uh, so I, I personally like, uh, B as, uh, Debbie mentioned on, on her remarks, but other than that, it's.
I mean, I, I like B if we were to use, but it's tied, for me, it's tied to whether we use that verbiage or not. I mean, not, not the exact verbiage, but whether we, we have the writing on both sides. So to me, if we are saying you're leaving Agora Hills and you're entering the Santa Monica Mountains, to me, that can happen at the same spot. If, as a council, we decide that we're not saying that and we're only saying you're entering the mountains or you're coming back into Agora Hills, then I could see where the offset is nicer. So it's hard for me because to me, those two things are, are tied together and we're not, we're not all in agreement on that.
I'm fine either way, actually. I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion. Either way, I think they're fine, straight across from each other. So I'm, I'm okay either way.
Do, um, oh, I wish. We need to phone our friend. We need to, we need to call Linda. Phone a friend. Um, I, I don't have a strong feeling. Um, and I sense that Councilmember Buckley Weber has a stronger feeling. So I'm, I, I want to, I'm, I'm happy to respect that. I'm trying to picture how C would look if we did decide to.
It just, the, the, the difference would be whether or not they're lined up right across from each other versus being staggered. Um, and, and I understand what you're saying, um, Mayor Protem, about it depends on whether or not there's going to be the language or not. Um, and, you know, if you guys want to make that decision, we can make that decision, uh, but we don't have to. Ms. Lee, City Attorney. Is there a way that Charmaine can talk to Linda?
Is it just on the signs?
Yes.
It's the placement.
I guess I'm wondering if it's an option, and staff would have to chime in here, is first, counsel to make a motion on the rest of the design components? If they want to wait and just table the sign issue to the next meeting? It's.
Yeah, we, we could do that. We can also, because it's the footprint, there's a box that we showed on one of the slides. And the slight offset, I believe it still fits within that, that box. We could just analyze the, um, footprint of that area and then come back at a later date on how we want to place the slots, the signs, whether they're offset or not.
That'd be great. If it doesn't slow you down.
Yeah, we don't want to slow you down.
No.
We don't want to slow you down, but this, this is a, this is a kind of a real, um, it's important.
No, no, I understand.
This entrance.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, I think what we're looking for is the footprint. So the footprint box, it takes into account that, the replacements, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
Right. So basically, Charmaine, do you have direction on the, on the, what, overall, with the exception of the signs? The placement, otherwise, well, it seems like we're all in agreement.
Mayor Weber, I, I believe I do.
All right.
Thank you.
So, uh, so I think the staff is recommending that the council give them direction. I think that Charmaine said that they, she, they have enough direction. And to finalize the, the project footprint for the CBO analysis for the Canaan Road and Agora Road, the ultimate intersection and project. So if I could have a motion to direct staff to proceed with the final design of the project, I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Buckley Weber, some moves?
Thank you.
I'll second. This is Mayor Protem Deverclen Lopez.
Thank you all. No, I'll, excuse me. Uh, well, I'll call on each council member for their vote. Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez?
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well, so the motion passes four to zero. Thank you all. And again, thank you to staff. Uh, uh, a wonderful job, a wonderful job. Um, that will bring us to, uh, the end of our meeting tonight. Uh, does any staff have any comments? I don't see any hands raised. Uh, any council comments, uh, would like to, uh, leave as we say goodbye or adjourn? Uh, yes, Debbie?
I wanted to let my fellow council members know that I got a wonderful message, direct message today, from a resident who, whose mother worked at the Agora Hills Library for over a decade. Uh, and he pointed out to me that today is the 20th anniversary of the opening of our library and, um, and recreation center. So he, Nate, I, I called our, our city manager, Nate Hamburger, and he was conferring with, with Nina. Uh, sure enough, I get this, uh, Acorn article sent to me that says, "The city of Agora Hills is inviting the community to join in the self, in celebrating the grand opening of its new library civic center, not rec center, civic center, uh, at 30001 Lady Face Court in Agora Hills." And it was on Saturday, October 27th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and featured the Agora Trombone Quartet with Matt Finders. Uh, and there were activities with children and storytelling, and that was 20 years ago today. So I just thought it was not only, uh, great to, to celebrate the history of our, the beautiful, uh, location that we should be sitting in right now and will be soon, but, uh, but that it came from a resident whose, whose family member worked at the library for so long. And I, I just thought it was a, a great thing to point out. Uh, happy anniversary to us.
Thank you. Good job. It's kind of funny, Debbie, and I was there. But what the heck? So, but it's amazing. Uh, I remember it distinctly. I remember walking that site with other council members and it's, uh, it's hard to believe it's 20 years ago. But thank you for pointing that out. Yes, Elise?
Um, I just wanted to count, uh, congratulate Mayor Weber and our staff, the Greater Conejo Chamber of Commerce, JB Long and the Rams, and Italian Deli for being Business of the Year. Um, I enjoyed the State of the City today. I thought it was really well done and it was actually under an hour. So that's impressive, Mr. Mayor. Um, the theme of unity in our community, um, is very timely indeed. So thank you for, um, raising, bringing that up to everybody in the community. So good job, everyone.
Thank you, Elise. Uh, Chris, any, any last minute comments?
Uh, yes, actually, I'd like to, um, mention actually, and I know Councilmember Northrup, if she was here, I think that she would also, uh, second, is I just want to remind everybody again that the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, uh, and so I want to remind everybody out there to make sure you get tested. And also for all cancers, I want to, uh, again, remind people to, to get their annual physicals. And, uh, and also want to, uh, wish my fellow council member, Northrup, uh, that we look forward to seeing her, uh, at, at the next meeting. And, uh, and, and so I just want to wish her well as well. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, and the only thing I have to say is that, um, uh, again, I want to reiterate, um, what Elise said about the staff, how hard they worked. And I mentioned the, those four individuals earlier on, but, you know, it's, it's an amazing accomplishment, what they do each and every year for, for each of the, each of the mayors and, um, it, it just, it'd be congratulated. So I, I, I thank them all for their, their hard work. The only thing I would, I would say is that just everybody be very careful on Halloween if you're out. Um, you know, we, we, we recently had a, um, a bike ride come to the city hall and we, uh, Chris Anstead and I were there. We addressed the bicycles and, um, the, the, there's, there was some sheriff's, uh, motorcycles there. Um, and when I think about bicycles and people on the streets, especially Halloween with little children, just, just be careful, uh, where you are, how you walk, where you walk. And, um, and just, and be sure, parents, whatever that your, your children get as candy, just go through it with a, a fine tooth comb and make sure there's nothing inappropriate in, in those baskets, so. Um, other than that, I would like to ask, uh, one of the council members to, uh, make a motion, uh, and adjourn us to the regular city council meeting, which will be scheduled, um, for at six o'clock, for Wednesday, November 10. And it's anticipated that the meeting will be held in, by video conferencing. Any person attendance with the council team is, will not be permitted. So if I could have a motion and a second, I'd appreciate it.
I'll need the motion to adjourn the meeting. This is Deverclen Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Buckley Weber seconds the motion.
Thank you. I'll call on everybody for the vote now. Councilmember Anstead.
Aye.
Councilmember Buckley Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez.
Aye.
And I agree as well, so the motion passes five to zero, four to zero. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.